We're good? All right. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Tumwater's Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. It's seven o'clock and we're called to order. Start with our roll call. Commissioner Daniel? You didn't hear from her. Unknown. Commissioner Edwards is excused. Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Uh huh.
Great. Commissioner Kotek? He's online. Let me just mute him. Commissioner Kotek?
I'm here. I can't hear anything hardly that's going on in the room. It keeps breaking up really bad.
Oh. Okay. Should we pause for a moment while we sort that out? Uh, I think. Here's your, I've got a green light here. Did it get better? Commissioner Kotek?
I can hear you, Erica. I can hear you speaking.
Okay. Can you hear me? This is, um...
I can hear you now, Elizabeth. Uh huh. I can hear you now.
Okay. Great. I scoot, I scoot the mic a little closer to me.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Very good. Usually I'm not all that quiet. So, okay. Thank you for bringing that up so we can fix it for anybody else who might be online. Uh, okay. Sorry for the interruption. Commissioner Nelson? Here. Great. Vice Chair Staff?
Here.
And me, Commissioner Robbins. So, we do have a quorum. We're ready to go. Um, I think that it's not quite a change to the agenda, but our Director's Report might be a little bit delayed depending on when Brad is able to join us. He's presently with the City Council. We'll see how that goes at that point soon. But we can move that down probably after our discussion number eight on Food System Plan. Any other changes? Okay. Um, let's go to Commissioners' Reports. Anybody say anything?
I have one.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Nelson.
And I don't, you know, I don't go to the City Council meeting. This is Neil Lipton, and I thought it was really cool. So, there's a gentleman named David Nakandji?
Yes.
He's on the Tumwater Historic Preservation Committee, Commission, and he has discovered that Prosper Road is smack dab on the 47th parallel.
Uh huh. Yes.
I just think it's cool. Um, the 46th is in Oregon someplace. I forget where. I'd have to read the article again. Of course, we know where the 48th is. And as I, as we were driving up I-5, coming from the south, I thought, wouldn't that be fun to have a little sign on the freeway that, but I have no idea how that comes about, but...
It would be through, oh.
It's a lot of work to get a sign on there, on the freeway. I did work with that when I was working at Heritage. But there's a lot of communication, and I'm sure somebody would do it.
Yeah.
Well, he's gonna be working on it, and I just thought...
He's the right person, though.
Yeah. One commission to another. Good job finding out we're on the 47th.
Right. Yeah. A lot of our roads, which are now either city streets or what have you, were laid out, platted on those important lat long kinds of things. Precisely. That's why Boundary, example, is one of the key roads on the boundary between east and west. So, um, you know, a lot of those kinds of things. All that, all that history is there. It's very... Mr. Nakandji used to actually serve, I think, both on the Planning Commission and on Tumwater City Council, and he's the former director of the State Historical Museum up in Tacoma.
Nice, nice person.
So, you've got, you've got him some, some history here. Thanks for bringing that up. Anybody else with anything?
Um, the, yeah, I have something. So, there's a new CEO for Experience Olympia and Beyond. Michael Day is his name. There is a reception for him at Anthony's today. I attended on behalf of the Children's Museum and the Experience Olympia and Beyond Board Directors. Great individual. Hopefully, we'll hear more from him for bringing visitation into Tumwater and our different areas. While I was there, there were many different Commissioners, City Council people there in attendance as well. So, it was great to talk to some different people and kind of sound some things that we're dealing with here in our city that are also happening in Lacey and other, other places. So, it was great to kind of have this nice collaborative conversation to welcome Michael Day into the community. So, good things ahead, hopefully.
Yeah. Good. Thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah. And that we need to get...
Maybe we'll invite him to come.
Yes. We need to get something really cool here in Tumwater and show everybody up. Community Center, all that, all that fun stuff.
Yeah.
I will say, we did have interviews for our Economic Coordinator today.
Oh, good. Very cool.
That would be something that maybe bring up?
Yeah.
Yeah. We talked about FIFA as well, which is actually happening over right now at Council. That discussion's happening. So, a lot of things that also have to do with planning because we need to plan for how to host events like this in our future because right now, we don't have the infrastructure to do so. So, I think it's a critical piece that we have to...
Does that kind of thing, the FIFA in particular, maybe other events, is that, does that come through Planning Commission or is that more of a Parks and Rec?
So, that is, um...
Or is that tourism and economic?
It's a tourism piece, but it's also now a city piece. So, all the cities are being looked at for how to participate. The event, we have been already designated as a host site, but there's a lot of funding that has to go with that. And it's going to take place down on a port property on the peninsula where they've done South, South South Block Party and some other things. But there's a lot of infrastructure that has to go into it, which is Wi-Fi capabilities, internet capabilities, food, all sorts of things because it's supposed to draw a vast number of people here. And for Tumwater, hopefully, we get some people at our La Quinta Craft District and other businesses to give us some of that outside revenue through sales tax, which is always important.
Remind me what FIFA is?
Soccer.
Oh, wow.
World Cup. So, the World Cup's in Seattle and some other places. So, they have host cities all over the country, and if you're designated one of those hosts, it's called a fan zone. That's how they kind of direct people from all over the world to go and, and go to those communities to watch the games remotely. But you're kind of in this whole group of other people that are like-minded individuals having a really good time.
Many people would show up at something like that.
Um, it depends on who's playing. And depend on who's playing, but they were talking hundreds of thousands of people for Seattle.
Just to watch it remotely, so?
So, you're, and then you're talking tens of thousands of people remotely. So, yes, we would have a decent chunk of people come here. So, it is something that is on a lot of people's radars, and it's spurring conversation around we don't have the rack in Lacey yet. We don't have anything in Tumwater that can host it. We don't have anything in Olympia that can host it. So, we're missing out on different opportunities to bring in tourism revenue. Um, yeah. So, there's, there's a lot of those conversations for my other side of things because tourism, I think, is super important to boost our, our community.
They closed the tourism place down, down Capital Campus.
Uh huh. Yeah.
The state one? Yeah.
And now there's...
You wouldn't be able to go in there and get packages and maps and stuff like that?
Uh, Olympia just...
And we don't, we don't have a, Tumwater doesn't have a, a live...
Yeah. A lot of those are going by the wayside, but AHA just opened downtown Olympia, and they're acting as a visitor center. So, it's a historical museum as well as a visitor center is what they're calling themselves. Mayor Selby from Olympia just opened it with some other folks. So, they do have those maps and everything down there now because the, unfortunately, yeah, that, that model has gone away. You can still get visitor maps. I'm hoping that Tumwater has visitor maps at City Hall and other locations to tell you where to go and what to do because it is super important. But that kind of having a center that is staffed and have people there has, has gone away unfortunately. Because I agree, I love going to a visitor center and being like, what do I do? What's going on?
What do you staff? Chamber of Commerce, too.
So, yeah. Lots of, lots of things there.
Lots of things have gone away.
Yeah. Because now there's the Thurston County Chamber, which is leading the charge for the FIFA World Cup activities. But it's Thurston County Chamber.
Hmm.
So...
There's no water chamber.
There's not. There's not a lot of things that are city-specific anymore. I could talk all day about all the different things that are going on there. But yeah, I just wanted to make the group aware, and I think tourism's great for our town. We have a beautiful town.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll hear more.
Yeah.
Okie doke. Um, did anybody else, I didn't want to cut anybody off. Commissioner Kotek, did you have anything?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kirkpatrick? No. Okay. Um, let's then skip over the Director's Report and pick that up later and go to public comments. We have someone online, but their name is in the glare spot, Mr. Chris Lester. Did I say that right?
Yep.
Okay. Hi there. If you'd like to address the, the Planning Commission on general matters, if you could say your name and where you live and if you represent anybody?
My name's Chris, I don't know if you, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
Yep. My name's Chris Lester. I represent Thurston County Realtors Association. I'm one of the Government Affairs Directors and just saying who I am, no public comment tonight, but I'm here to listen in.
Very good. Thank you so much for taking the time to come to our meeting.
Yep.
Alrighty. Did we hear from anybody in the meantime? Do you know, Erica, since our last meeting, either email or phone or anything else? Brad may know when he gets here.
We did hear back from the community, there was an interested group, a stakeholder group for the utility element. I haven't had a, that just came in today, so I haven't had a chance to read it, but that's great because we didn't receive many public comments on the utility element. But as far as housing, we have no updated public comments. I haven't heard anything regarding the land use or the conservation element, so...
Um, let's go to item number seven, our 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, the 2025 Development Code Update. Erica, do that. Mostly a lot of state requirements and what, what, how it's gonna affect us, right?
Yeah. Bunch of fun stuff.
All right. Let's, let me share my screen. Give me just a moment.
All right. Thank you all for joining me tonight. We are going to discuss the 2025 Development Code Update. The primary focus of tonight's discussion is going to be around the state required amendments, oops, sorry, to the Tumwater Municipal Code that are required to be completed by the end of 2025. This was sparked on Senate Bill 5558, which was passed earlier this year. A little bit about Senate Bill 5558. Senate Bill 5558 removes the option to adopt our middle housing, our ADUs, our design review development code standards six months after the periodic update. Now, middle housing, ADUs, design review are now due at the time of our comprehensive plan adoption. Previously, we were under the impression that we had six months after the adoption date. So, that's why these development code items are very specific to Senate Bill 5558. I wanted to kind of refresh the city's role in development. Tumwater's zoning regulations, permit procedures and fees directly influence the location intensity and type of use that can be built. What are development regulations? Our development regulations are the tools that translate the goals and policies of the comprehensive... Sorry, forgive me. I don't know my presenting skills. The buttons of the comprehensive plan into zoning, land division and environmental regulations. This is where our comprehensive plan might, might be more visible on how it affects the community or how it might directly relate to the community. The zoning maps. And based on the future land use map, the city zoning map establishes the location and boundaries of the zoning districts that allow specific uses and intensities. Last time we met, we talked about land use and then kind of the difference between what the zoning allows us to do and then what the land use element is. So, this is more specific to land use, but getting deeper into it, into the zoning districts that allow or state what you can or can't do. Um, throughout the presentation, I have some questions or things to consider while we're going through the proposed amendments, the state required amendments, such as, does the development code translate the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan? While we go through this, if we can jog our memories back to talking about specific, more directly, the housing element, our goals and policies with the housing element, do these development code, proposed development code changes reflect what we want to see or say that we're gonna do with our goals and policies in the housing element? Are the proposed amendments clear and what are the potential impacts? Currently, in the packet, you guys were provided just a table of amendments. Right now, I'm still working with staff, the current planning department, to do the gap analysis, so we don't actually have draft proposed language. This is more to refresh you or to inform you what specific updates we're doing. We, later on in the presentation, I go over the timeline when we'll start seeing actual draft ordinances being proposed. This is more, let's, let's start thinking about the impacts and how they would fit in the City of Tumwater.
Real quickly, Erica, when we say in the, in the big table that's in the packet, Attachment A, the effect on Tumwater, we mean, or what do, what do we mean? Do we mean the effect on Tumwater as a, as a jurisdiction, the government, the city government? Or do we need more, more dispersed to landowners, property owners, businesses, developers, people that are in, or, you know, there's a distinction, I guess, in my mind, but are we, are we talking about that kind of thing?
I would, I would say the impacts, whether positive or negative, to the community as a whole. I feel like the development code, it's really specific to what the zoning is and what the use proposed is.
Right.
Use changes with housing, so anyone that could be affected by housing, developers, the individual, a neighbor, someone purchasing a house or someone looking to rent, the housing options for the community. I feel these proposed amendments are relatable to a lot of individuals. Yeah. It could also affect permitting. We do touch on in here all the different ways that we're updating, the different code updates. Yeah. Yeah. Hopefully, I answered that clearly enough. Yeah. Okay. The focus on the specific housing-related updates under Senate Bill 5558, we're going to be talking about middle housing, accessory dwelling units, co-housing and other residential ownership types, clear design standards, permit timelines, and the role of religious organizations in the housing. So, more specifically, these are the topics and how this might impact the community with these topics and updates.
And I think we discussed at one point, probably some months back, that by religious organization, we, we primarily mean any nonprofit entity that, which turn out to be mostly somehow affiliated with religious institutions, but it could be any nonprofit that has the wherewithal and the interest to do something with housing.
I would have to look at the RCWs under that. I didn't dive too deep into it.
It just seems, I, I think I remember bringing something up about it. It seems curious to me that we would call out religious organizations when there are other types of organizations that have potential roles with housing.
Yeah. So, are you thinking more nonprofit, like our housing authority or...
Um, it could be any kind of thing, I would imagine. I, you know, it's some sort of entity that doesn't necessarily have an affiliation with a religious, a church or synagogue or temple or what have you.
I do, I am under, I will check on this and clarify, but I am under the impression that it is specific to religious organizations.
True.
Yeah. Yeah. That...
There's an RCW here that you're quoting.
Right. So, I would have to refer to the RCW and go back and see if there's any stipulation on what qualifies under this.
Yeah.
But based on... Yeah. I'll follow up with you.
Okay.
I, I wanna, yeah, look at the RCW and, so you want to specify...
Curious, I mean, are, is that a limitation? Does that prevent some other entity that happens not to have a religious affiliation from providing a useful role? I don't know if, that they necessarily are interested or whatever, but is, is that a limitation?
Well, is it strictly for houseless population? Is it strictly for ultra-low income? That's where my mind's going.
Yeah. We do kind of get into some specifics on what qualifies. Um, what this, when we... Let's circle back to those questions when we get to those proposed amendments. Yeah. Yeah. We, I provide some context and some stipulations and notes on them. Yeah.
RCW 3601-290.
Let's go back to you. This one is a 3670A.545, so, in the packet.
Yeah. I'll pull up my packet.
And, and seemed to emphasize the fact that a religious organization, even if they ceased to be a religious organization, had to assure that that housing is low income for 50 years.
Uh huh.
So, it felt like it was on that side of making sure that it didn't start out as either low income or homeless and then get converted to something else.
Gotcha. Yes. That's what I...
That's how I read it.
Yeah. And, and it's, yeah, so the housing must be affordable for households earning less than 80% of the area median income and must remain affordable for at least 50 years, regardless of whether the religious organization continues to own the property. And, you know, I'm kind of thinking, back to your question, Commissioner Robbins, are we thinking maybe organizations or groups that might not be your stereotypical religious organization? Maybe like...
Like First Homes? What, First, there's a nonprofit here in town that does a lot of work with housing. You'd want them to be able to qualify for all of this, perhaps?
Um, it, yeah. I, I'm just, I'm, I wouldn't want us to be limited to, if, if there's some, if there's some entity that just is not affiliated with a religious institution but has the wherewithal and interest to do this kind of work for us, why would we limit them? I don't know that they do exist, but it, from what you've just read, maybe I didn't take it all in, but it sounds like it has to be initiated with a religious entity.
No. I think it was just if there's a religious entity...
Who starts it.
Who starts under these regulations.
Okay.
And the church or there, at some point, doesn't exist anymore.
Okay.
That housing is protected. That's how I...
That's how you read it. So, it doesn't have to initiate with that entity.
Right.
If, if that's the case, then there has to be some provision for its continuity.
I read it as something happened and somebody probably converted housing at one point that right after and made a profit off of it.
Right.
And RCW was put in play.
But, you know, that could happen with any nonprofit. So, it really should be inclusive.
Yeah.
All the, if the RCW isn't written that way.
Right.
They probably can't.
Right. There needs to be something kind of on the order of a conservancy-type arrangement or whatever. You know what I mean? The land conservancy or the farm conservancy kind of a thing.
But, but your scenario is very possible.
I do believe there is probably some stipulation or some reason why it is specific to religious.
Uh huh.
So, that is something we'll have.
Yeah. It was something that has occurred in the, in the past in places where those housing units were in jeopardy as a result of the change in ownership.
Yeah. I think there's some specific laws and rules that apply to religious organizations and property and that might have, that might come into play and might be a reason of why...
Are those at a state level or are those city code?
Um, it would be state.
Yeah.
Yeah. These are all based on state requirements. Yeah. RCWs, WACs, bills, Senate bills, House bills.
Okay. Well, I would sure hope we wouldn't turn anybody down who wants to help us.
Yeah.
Don't get out of the way.
Yeah. Okay. So, we're gonna start kind of looking at the middle housing amendments that are through State House Bill 1110. Um, overview would be to increase middle housing in areas traditionally dedicated to single-family detached housing. We have started to identify sections of code that we want to amend, so this is mostly going to be in our Title 18 zoning and Title 17 land division. Moving forward, we have to allow at least two units per lot in residential zones and at least four units per lot in residential zones if at least one unit is affordable housing. Um, right now, currently, as it's proposed in our land use element, the minimum is two units per lot or two units per acre, I should say. We are looking at the RSR, which is a residential resource zone. We want to be careful because that zoning was specific, specifically created to protect critical areas. So, what, what we want to do is we don't want to have a lot of dense development happen in those areas that could impact our groundwater, that could impact the critical area, could be near a flood zone, high groundwater. So, staff are looking at meeting, using the alternative, which is meeting density requirements on 75% of city lots. And then also, part of this House Bill is meeting two ADUs per lot and allowing at least six out of the nine types of middle housing. And then we, staff need to create a process for zero lot line short cuts. Still under the same bill, this is a big one. We're gonna limit design review for middle housing to standards that apply to single-family houses. So, this impacts application process, the permitting process. We cannot have different or more stringent standards for middle housing than we do for single-family residences. We need to address parking requirements for middle housing, change the requirements for a one parking spot on lots less than 6,000 square feet and two spaces on lots greater than 6,000 square feet.
And this is a change for Tumwater? Okay.
Much more detailed look at how parking is for kind of use. Typically, we have like two units for most housing, and then if you have, say, a one-bedroom or so, you may get slightly smaller number. Parking stalls require one and a half or something like that. Now, we're getting into fine detail.
And as part of the middle housing requirement, common interest communities, like our condominiums or homeowners associations, cannot prohibit the implementation of this bill. So, part of this, this middle housing update, where staff are gonna have to look at the zoning and our density changes. We've determined to allow the six middle housing types such as duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhouses, stack flats and cottage housing. This was also based on a community preference survey. We did go out to the public and we also went to events and these were the most common, commonly voted on types of middle housing. And we are, we've worked with consultants on our design review updates. Fortunately, we had consultants help with our citywide design guidelines and our middle housing code amendments. They've done a gap analysis for us, so thankful for that. And then, as I had mentioned, a zero lot line process.
So the six allowed middle housing types, the state legislation was that if we were a certain population, we could choose among a total of nine, which also included quadplexes and five and six plexes. So there's a broader range of things that we could have done. All we tried to do is try to, in my mind, try to mimic what we could do for those clean density areas where it made more sense. Cottage housing was definitely something we wanted to keep. And it made sense to expand where we allow duplexes, triplexes and quads. We currently allow townhouses, so it made sense to continue that. And so really the only big change is the stack flats. Which is literally one, one unit, two units, three units, up to whatever the height limit is. So essentially you can go if you're up to four stories. That's how they define a stack flat. It's essentially a townhome turned on its side.
And we do technically allow for five plexes, six plexes, but I think those would be considered multi-family. So there, they do exist, it's just not classified as middle housing.
What are row houses?
Row houses are like townhouses, so they share the, a similar, a common wall. Typically, both townhouses and row houses, there's actually a property line that runs through that common wall. So that's also another, a zero lot line would be something similar to that.
Yeah.
But except in a zero lot line, it might just be, look from the outside like a duplex, but if you look at the paper, there's a line between the two, row houses to sort of add on to that.
I know quite a bit to cover for middle housing. We do have more specific updates required for the ADUs. We touched on that a little bit. Any further questions? What is a zero lot line? What is? No, no, we're good, perfect. I think it will be easier once we have the draft ordinance prepared for your, for everyone to review as well. Again, this was just a refresher, giving you the table and the, the general topics that we're discussing.
Our primary concern is the, the simple ordinance is going to be fairly lengthy because we're making changes throughout Title eighteen. So the details can be lost unless you devote a long time following it through all a hundred pages. We wanted to sort of start with the broader concepts, so when we're looking at things, you see, oh yes, we combine these zone districts together, divided these additional uses here, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So Erica, on page eleven, it just caught my attention. And it says may be restricted in, and at the very bottom of that, before you get to ADU, it says where prohibited by HOA covenants and restrictions. But you said that HOA covenants cannot restrict any of this.
Yeah, you're talking about, oh, was there a typo on the table?
I don't know, maybe there was.
Yeah, I think it might have been a typo. Yeah, we, yeah, the, the presentation is correct.
The important thing is, say, if you have an existing HOA or a development that's already in place, they may have rules that prohibit an ADU.
An ADU.
Those things still go forward because those are still, have been approved, legal at the time they're approved and so forth.
Okay, so they can.
And so what this does is do is retroactively say, those things no longer apply. We can certainly work with homeowner association or the individual residents can work with their homeowner association, say, we want to do, we want to make our own amendments to do this. But it's not something that the city, because it's a private contract, has the ability to go in and change. But going forward, as part of the plot approval process, there's also usually the homeowner association rules that are go through. And that's definitely something that we could have a say in saying, you can't do that because the state law says you can't.
Right.
That's Commissioner Coach's.
Thank, thank you. Brad, I want to make sure I heard you correctly because it broke up a little bit. If it's a current HOA, they don't have to abide by this. But if it's a new HOA being formed in the city of Tumwater, then this would apply. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But at the same time, you're saying that you could sit down and talk to the existing HOAs and give them language that they could use to modify their covenants.
It would be their choice to do that, make that, make that amendment.
Something that we ought to take the effort to do.
If, if an existing HOA, does the law address whether if an existing HOA changes in that manner, its current covenants and restrictions, does that open up the can of worms?
No, and I, I guess unless they, you know, rescind their rules completely.
And they're.
They don't apply, period. And then adopt something completely brand-new and don't amend, maybe, but I'm not an attorney and I really don't.
Right, okay.
Do you have any?
Right, right.
Whether it requires a fifty percent permit to change them, or it requires an eighty percent.
Right.
This depends on how they're written. It covers the whole gamut.
The reason I brought up the completely rescind everything and replace it with something completely brand-new is Charlottesville, Virginia is dealing with an issue right now. They have no zoning code. Because their new zoning code got challenged and the judge put a hold on it. Problem was, can't revert to the old one because they took the action to get rid of it. Have anything?
Thanks.
Don't know that applies to with us, but that just came to mind.
Serious, yes. Commissioner Kurt Patchett.
At some point, as part of this process, and I guess maybe in the development plan, aren't we going to come up with a whole new nomenclature for our different zoning?
Yes.
When will we see that?
As part of this ordinance because it fits in with what we're doing with the middle housing. And also it, it deals with the issues that we have with the density ranges and what can we allow for to meet that under eighty percent. So again, the proposal is to leave the residential sensitive resource zone alone. Because that is a very specific focused zone and it's there because it's protecting environmental resources. So its density is between two and four. Four in the past had been the bright line of what is urban. Keep fighting about what that is, but it's still approximately true. We don't necessarily want to change that because those are large wetland complexes, high groundwater and all that. The two single-family zones are a single-family low and a single-family medium. Those are the ones we're considering have the density range similar to what we do for single-family medium right now. And then, so we would get rid of the single-family because it's no longer a single-family, only duplexes, everything else would be allowed. And then multifamily medium would become medium-density residential. High would become high.
We're going to get rid of the word family?
We're getting rid of, yeah.
Because I, I noticed that, I think Olympia, you know, they just have some letters and some numbers. That's the way, so that people don't get mixed up in what the words really mean. This is a one AB and this is a two CD, so we're going to move to something like that.
So, but in our case, we wanted, I think the value indicating it's a low versus a high is a signal that it's a low intensity versus a high intensity use, meaning more units, more everything kind of thing. I think that's still a valid way of seeing it. But you're correct, it's, because it's not exclusively a single-family zone anymore, it doesn't make sense to call it a single-family because it allows all these middle.
Well, you know, it's right in here is, is the legislative thing that says it can have a group house. Group house means there's no longer any, and that's going to be interesting in rentals.
Uh, group, well.
Co-living?
Co-living.
You mean co-living? Or rooming houses?
I guess co.
Yeah.
There's, there's a few varieties of group houses. There's, there's the requirement for group homes, which is a state requirement that says we have to allow for group homes for a variety of, you know, you know, things that are dealt with typically through DSH and other things like that. That's sort of a blanket, I'll shout, allow these uses. Rooming houses and so forth are sort of a type of multifamily where you have a shared kitchen or a shared bathroom. But you have individual bedrooms, lockable. So it'd be, it's slightly different than, say, you know, dividing a house up maybe or something like.
Yeah, co-living is, is a word that's used in here.
One of the types of housing that I didn't see listed here is, that we used to call, still do, I think, transition housing. And that transition housing can be for a variety of conditions.
He's actually, and I, that's what you need by transition.
Well, let's just say you're an alcoholic and part of your treatment is to go into transition. But we also know that there are folks who have been convicted of child abuse, sex abuse type things as well. Some of their treatment plan could also include transition housing. So how does that fit into the big picture?
Well, there are different varieties of what is considered transitional housing. One thing that we dealt with a couple of years ago because of the code change, our RCW change, was dealing with facilities serving those who are coming out of homelessness. And there was the emergency shelter, first level, get people off the streets into sheltered space. The next phase was transitional housing, which is also, which is defined in our, in eighteen oh four as being essentially a shorter term, longer than emergency shelter, but say six months or whatever. To help those people with wraparound services come out of a homeless situation. There's also what you spoke of. Those kinds of transitional facilities that are helping people either come out of prison system or as part of a rehab facility or something like that. There are different varieties and in some cases they become what are called essential public services. So drug rehab, for example, is one of those kinds of things. And so there's this special thing in state law that we've adopted, that we have to adopt, that says it falls under the category of things that we need but nobody wants. But we have a process that's a conditional use that you go through to get approval. And there are particular locations in the city that you could locate those kinds of facilities. What I can't remember is transition facility coming out of prison. Whether that falls into that category or it gets on its own. I think it's a part of an essential public facility.
So there's some separate regulation.
It is sort of a separate creature.
Not in here.
You may live there, but it's not residential in this state, according to the state. They don't, prisons aren't a residential option here.
In a zoning, specific zone.
Okay. Thanks.
Halfway house.
Oh, right.
Oh, yeah.
Next, some proposed amendments for the accessory dwelling units. Summary would be expanding our housing options to ease barriers to the construction of ADUs. Some highlights for this update and this House Bill. We're now allowing two ADUs per lot. Our current code limits ADUs to one per lot with a single-family residence. We're changing our, the maximum size of ADUs. Our current maximum is eight hundred square feet. Now we cannot regulate them to be less than one thousand square feet. And no development or design standards for the ADU that, that are more restrictive than the principal home. The current code limits the, the design of an ADU to maintain basically the look and the design of the main or existing single-family residence. And we must allow conversion of existing buildings into an ADU even if it's non-conforming. So we need to create processes for non-conforming structures to be allowed to be converted to accessory dwelling units as long as it meets building code. And then the impact fees, we need to look at the impact fees and ensure that ADUs are not more than fifty percent of the single-family homes.
Am I reading the maximum size wrong?
It's worded, it's really, in a really unique way.
It seems like there's a better way to word that, right?
Yeah.
They're all going to be thousand square feet. Like you can set a minute, you can set a maximum, but it can't be less than.
Yeah, we can't regulate it to be less than a thousand square feet. Someone can still build eight hundred square feet if they want, but our code can't say the maximum is eight hundred anymore. We, we could, so this is something that we need to.
Thousand?
Not even, that would be up to us.
It would be up to us. We have to allow at least a thousand.
Square feet.
Square feet.
Per ADU.
Per ADU.
That's.
I know.
I had to read it.
Yeah.
Times, I'm like, I know, I've had a very long day, but it's like, that's not clicking.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we could technically impose, you know, an ADU.
No, actually it makes sense. Just have to.
Yeah.
You have to become part of it and.
You have to become one with your ADU.
So are, are, are people that are reading this, that are looking at ADUs, are they going to be able to quickly look at that? Or are you going to get a five hundred phone calls?
Our, our handy one-sheet guide across the table, our closest new ADU plan will be a thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, the pre-approved ADUs, they're all a thousand, yeah.
But you do have pre-approved monolots, right?
As well, we do at the moment. The, the issue with the current plans is they don't reflect the current energy code.
Oh.
So one of the reasons we're updating them in addition to this requirement is because to capture the new building code things.
Well, just to know that most of us are going to read that, like, we have to have a one thousand square foot ADU, so.
Right.
So the way we've read the code will be like, the maximum is this. I think, you know, there can still be a maximum, but we can't say that the maximum is less than a thousand square feet.
One of the, one of the few things we're looking for for the new person Anna and Erica is, is somebody who can speak clearly.
Plain languages. The complete non-housing language.
Plain English.
But the bottom line is that the homeowner slash developer can build smaller than a thousand.
Yes.
If they want to. If they want to make sure they can fit on the lot. And they can't fit two one thousands, they can build two eight hundreds.
Whatever size, and the only thing they're really limited to at the bottom end is building code.
Yeah, so there's a minimum.
Energy code.
So what the building code establishes is the minimum size for, well, what you need to have as a separate unit in terms of the kitchen unit and a bathroom unit. You have a saint, you have a space for a refrigerator, you know, that, plus there's a minimum size for a bedroom. So that, and so we're, we can get down to, I think, when I talked to our building official, we got down to about three hundred to four hundred feet. Still need the code.
How big is a single wide?
That's a good question.
Yeah, there's arc models, single wide, yeah, I don't know.
I don't know off the.
And then tech, you know, technically tiny homes on wheels.
We're saying that on, on all residential lots, you can, you can build prefabricated houses. So typically, that would mean somebody would all in a single wide and call it an ADU, right?
Typically, 480 to 1,400 square feet.
Basically.
So 480.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's about the size of like a hotel room that has bathroom, little kitchenette, and then, well, it's about 400 square feet.
A double-wide is a little bit around that. I'm trying to remember past experience with.
Double-wide's close to 1,000.
Yeah.
So the building code sets the minimum for other reasons.
For habitable space.
And this other thing says that there can be a maximum, and it cannot be less than 1,000. Is that clear?
Yeah, that's a great way to put it. Yeah. All right. I think it's to give people more flexibility. I mean, it was pretty standard across the jurisdictions, at least in this area, that it was 800 square feet max. A little, to give a little more, yeah, again, flexibility. Also, if we are thinking about it down the road, we are going to do, we're required to do lot splitting, which is homeownership opportunities for ADUs. So I think that has somewhat of a role to play too, because eventually ADUs could become single-family residences or housing units.
Housing.
Standalone housing units, you know. Some things we need to consider with these amendments is the ownership aspect of an ADU. Previously, we required the owner to be on the property. No longer is the owner required to live on that parcel.
And actually, a different owner can own each of those buildings.
Right. I don't, the lot splitting though, isn't part of this required update, but it is something we need to consider and plan for as part of the development code update. We also, looking at utility connections, parking requirements. In the future, we're going to finish with the tree and vegetation code. And what about smaller lots and then the permitting and recording process for when we start to do the lot splitting and other types of subdivision processes?
So, very quickly, utility connections is important because we charge a fee to connect to our water sewer. That's a pretty substantial fee. One thing that we have been doing when we've had ADUs is basically allowing somebody to use an existing connection or a still on that, serve the ADU. The issue comes when we have different owners, and one owner may be using a lot of water and the other one's not, and it becomes a civil matter potentially to solve who pays for what. So we're kind of, trying to figure a middle line because it is slightly, it is obviously more expensive of an action fee. It could be slightly more expensive to run a separate service out. Just trying to figure that out. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good. Does police and fire play into this? If we're adding a whole bunch of ADUs in one certain area, which is increasing the density, how does that affect the police and fire department?
That's actually one of the struggles we're having right now because as we've talked about having, you know, the ability for somebody to multiple ownerships, multiple units on one parcel, and then ultimately splitting those parcels even further in addition to the density requirements, is we're trying to figure out, how do we actually figure out how much service we're going to be? Because in the old days, you could say, okay, we've got a 10-acre plot of land, we're going to get four units per acre, 40 units. Well, now those 40 units could potentially have three or four units on it. And now we have to figure out, it's sort of a probability game. How likely is that? How does that affect our service when you're doing fire, serving water, service, sewer, all those things come in. So.
Especially if you're lucky and in different areas, now you have greater potential for something that's outside. So that's a lens that I was talking to somebody about today, and it's like, wow, that's a great thing to bring up, is the fire department and police department, and how does, how much does this affect them?
Yeah, especially with access, parking, and then also road standards, things like that. If we're doing insil, that's a great, that's a great question.
It's something to keep in our minds moving forward, talking about doubling, I mean, 9,000 whatever houses, 21,000 people. How are we going to, how does that play in?
I would like to say that we have a perfect plan, and we run all the simulations about that, but it's really complex.
The worded like the thousand.
I think what we're really going to be doing is seeing what happens over the next five years. Code changes, if the economy still maintains, you know, things, are we seeing this development and what does that look like? And then we'll be adjusting.
So we have a, we have a parking component, but we don't have a traffic component.
It depends on how big it is. If it's a subdivision or something bigger than a short flat, we would still have a traffic study. But when we're dealing with something this small, we would probably not.
Yeah. I mean, then you've got.
Overall, yes, I know. And we've got 20 of these lots. Each one of them does their own thing.
Cumulose, death by a thousand, that kind of thing.
And then you have a four-way stop instead of a roundabout, like the Central by the North Station over there, and it's like, need more roundabouts.
Okay, but we don't have a good way to deal with, let's call it the density of ADUs and the traffic impacts, or do we? Well, in the width of the road. I know that sounds silly, but I've lived in a couple of different housing developments, and some of them have roads that are labeled, and we know they're city roads by the color of the street signs. And the other are private roads. And then we did not buy a house in Olympia because they've got really narrow roads in some of their home developments, and you can't get two vehicles past them. And you couldn't get a fire vehicle in there if there was a car in the road. And I don't want to see Tumwater go that way.
And that's one of the issues that we have, well, I have personally, I'm not going to speak for the rest of us, but with the parking requirements coming down from the state. I think it's okay for us to make adjustments based on what we know of local conditions. If there is adequate space on the street for parking, then, yeah, it makes sense to reduce the on-street, the off-street parking. There are a lot of neighborhoods in Tumwater where it's a very narrow road, not likely to be improved, or it's a steep slope or whatever, you know, their whole slew of reasons. But there's not really adequate on-street parking to meet the likelihood of the demand because we don't have a comprehensive transit system.
Yeah.
Not for a while. But it's not going to be the whole city either.
Eric? Yeah. I will say, we are allowing the option for up to two, but based on our permitting, our historical permits, we are not seeing that many ADUs currently. We are, I would, I am, I look for, I, I just am going to wait to see after this update how many more ADUs we actually get in for permitting, because there's still the cost of the ADU, and there is a property owner, someone who has to apply and pay for the fees of an ADU. And from what we've heard from stakeholders, it's still a matter of the price for an ADU building, constructing an ADU that meets all the energy code requirements and things like that. So to see someone who has a single-family residence, like on this example I put up here, those are two approximate footprints of ADUs. Someone building that and wanting that, yeah, I'm interested to see how many people actually apply for the two ADUs per lot realistically.
And I think, you know, this example would most likely right now be a stick. That means that whoever's building these things would have to bring everything back, or paint it over or whatever. But there's a lot of stuff that has to sit. Now, things are starting to advance a little bit more about modular housing, meaning that somebody could essentially take a crane and drop it into place.
Right.
We really haven't started to see that yet, but I think we're kind of hitting the tipping point in terms of construction costs. That's going to make a lot more sense. So, yeah, and I think Erica's correct. We haven't, we definitely haven't seen above, even with our increases, but.
Yeah, even with the pre-approved ADUs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When we talk lots, are we talking quarter acre, third acre, fifth acre?
Yeah.
Any of.
Yeah.
I'm doing that as well.
Yeah, we were just talking about this today.
Areas.
Yeah.
You need to understand like actual, you know, absolute.
Single family can go down to 4,000, something. So it's a tenth of an acre.
A lot, it depends on the zone.
It depends on the zone, but I think our single families, you can go pretty small now.
Yeah, that's.
Definitely under 6,000.
Yeah, okay.
Now, that doesn't take into account lot splitting, the condo kind of thing where you could carve out a box around one of those things and call it good. There's a whole bunch of stuff that's coming in as part of this update that kind of throws out the traditional thoughts about how big a lot is.
Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Could those two ADUs be a two-story with each story being a separate ADU?
It depends.
Um, oh, no, because of, sorry, square, square. No, you're, you're talking about a two-story, like one ADU on the bottom and then an ADU on top.
Yeah.
That's a trick. You go to Boston, that's, that's where all the, all the houses are because they used to be single-family houses, and they just converted the second floor into a house.
I think it wouldn't, it would be expensive. But you could probably do, take those two boxes and put them on top of each other. And that would be your two ADUs. Because right now, for example, you could add another story if that's a single-family house and call that an ADU.
Yeah.
Or attach it to the side or anything like that.
Or if there was an.
And you couldn't sell it.
That's their problem, I guess.
You could sell it as a duplex if, or you could.
It's freestanding.
Call a lot. You could say, I go up to this part of the scene, I sell everything. Now, there's obviously a lot more complications, but.
Okay. Which in, have an over/under two ADUs.
You know, the, from what I remember, there were some specific definitions of the ADUs for the two ADUs per lot. But we also allow for conversion of non-conforming structures or existing structures. So if someone had a detached shop, that would be an interesting concept if one story of the shop, if it had a loft, if one story was converted to a unit, and then the top story was converted to another unit. I don't remember seeing anything specific to two-story ADUs though.
And I don't, I don't think we've, I can't remember a prohibition against.
I guess that was my initial reaction, is I don't remember seeing any prohibition against it, especially the tiny homes.
Boston, you have whole neighborhoods like that. It used to all be single-family homes. Now they're all duplexes.
Mm-hmm.
And that's something we have been, we've allowed already. If you had an existing single family and you carved out part of it, it would be allowed. Especially if it could be next to you, it could be the second floor, it could be the basement, whatever. But it would be probably under occurrence.
And the way that I heard that is, could you take both of those and stack on both of those, and then you'd have four ADUs in the back?
Oh, I would say just two, because you could take one box and stack it on the other and leave the open space.
Saying stack them both.
Stack them both.
I don't think they'll be able to stack both because you'd have four ADUs. Unless you called them affordable housing, I don't.
Exactly. You'd go to that one, you'd get the ratio, one to three.
Permanently affordable.
Yeah, okay.
You could get a lot.
Great. Let me do just a quick time check. Are we, are you?
Yeah, I think we're fine.
Okay.
We need to give our other agenda item at least a half hour though.
Yeah, good. Okay.
You want to keep that? Yeah. Great discussion. So now we're going to dive into co-living. Co-living, it's also known as rooming house related uses. There, it's housing where there are sleeping units that are independently rented and provide living and sleeping space in which the residents would share kitchen facilities. We must allow co-living, housing as a permitted use on any lot located within the city that allows at least six multifamily residential units, including on lot zones for mixed-use development. With this, we do currently allow co-living. We, our municipal code actually has them as rooming houses. And our current code says rooming houses means dwelling units having only one kitchen in use for the lodging with or without meals for compensation of persons other than the related family members or operators of such a dwelling unit. A rooming house that is rented for less than 30 consecutive days requires a business license. A rooming house may allow for unlimited stay, unlike a bed and breakfast, which is limited to two weeks. This will need to be updated. I personally would like to propose changing the name of rooming house. It is an older term. Also, it's saying only one kitchen, but I think that if we have multiple floors, we might want to take a look at the way this language is written to include potential co-living structures that might be multi-storied or have more than one kitchen, depending on how many individual bedroom units there are.
Does the same apply to other shared uses like bathrooms?
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't, yeah, we don't really, yeah, that's.
The traditional model is, you know, separate bedroom for everybody and shared.
Shared everything. But so if it were multi-story, you would have both, you know, kitchen, cooking kind of setup on, on every story and also bathing, all that.
Something similar to a dorm.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. But could an existing property not be organized like this and each bedroom rented out? And what would be the difference? I'm sorry.
That's actually a good question.
Okay.
I think you could. It depends on, I, I think that's a question for Al.
Okay. So converting a residence into a co-living, yeah.
Because in Seattle, that's not.
That happened informally. There was an article in the Olympian yesterday or the day before. You know, I read it, but I don't, I didn't remember who was beginning to say, hey, there's a lot of elderly people living alone in bigger homes, and even gave a number to call so that they could rent out a bedroom. So what's the difference?
And I don't, and that's where we start to get definitions of zoning versus definitions of the normal room rental. I'm not sure I necessarily wanted the city that involved in, if somebody rents out a room in their house, saying that, no, no, you can't do that because that's this. No, that's a single-family house, you're renting out a bedroom.
Yeah, it gets.
But a rooming house is sort of like purpose-built or converted into that kind of use and intended to stay that kind of use. It's usually, the kitchens are much more robust, you know, there's more cook spaces, there's more refrigerator space, those kinds of things.
Almost hostile-ish, essentially.
You could take an existing house, set it up the right way, and then.
Yeah.
And that whole thing out.
I think it's much more, I'm thinking like a lockable door, all those kinds of things that might be different than arrangement where you rent out a single bedroom. It may or may not be a permanent thing that you.
Yeah. A lot of these plans that I had, I had previously presented this back in 2024 to city council when we were looking at options for co-living. And a lot of, it was, it's, it's popular in Seattle right now where we, there are units that are being built with small like kitchenettes in them, but then a, a big, larger kitchen for communal gatherings for when family visits. And not only do they have rental units, like their own individual units, but they have guest quarters for when residents have family visiting and then laundry facilities. It is, it's part of the community or community living.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I was just talking over the fourth about the community living aspect. And it seems like this is almost there, but not quite. And that model makes a lot of sense to me. This, to me, seems like somebody can just take their house and say, here you go, because it's got a kitchen, it's got.
Like, like a cooperative.
This is much more of the old-style downtown, Olympia, downtown, Seattle, where you had second or third or fourth stories that were individual rooms rented out. You may not have had a kitchen, but that was, you know, pre-ideals. The idea was you had your own space to sleep in, but then shared.
And when you're converting residences, I think the scale is a little bit smaller because it was a residential unit. So we would have typically three, four bedrooms with one to two bathrooms, you know, depending, and then the kitchen. So I, it's, I think this is just giving up an option for. So I, it's, I think this is just giving up an option for developers or individuals to have flexibility on what they build. Uh, again, it's gonna be less in the residential zoning, as it's written right now, the, the code and the bills are requiring it um, in specific zonings where we allow for six or more, uh, units based on density. So, um, that's something to consider too, um, but if this is like, yeah, there seems like there's some flexibility in options. And I agree with Brad, I don't wanna regulate individual room rentals.
And I think this, the basis of saying six or more is really the floor.
Yeah.
Size for these things.
I think that helps flush out the scale and then gives more of an idea of why it may, we may want to regulate it. Yeah.
Six and under.
Be a house. Yeah, or that might be why we wanna maybe keep rooming house and then add co-living units too. So this is more of like a residential-scale rooming house, whereas the co-living would be in our more multifamily zoning. Yeah, so this, these are great discussions, because we do have flexibility, because co-living is in the specific zoning with specific densities.
Oh, Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Oh, yes, um, I don't recall ever putting anybody up in Homewood, but we put several hundred up in Olympia as emergency housing. Uh, they took a piece of paper, they went out and they found somebody that was willing to give them a bedroom for fifty dollars a month. They came back to the homeless housing office and, uh, we wrote out a check to, uh, the homeowner for fifty bucks and they were in for a month, got them off the street. So it's, it's an on-coin operation in Olympia, I don't know if it's, uh, if, if anything prohibits it in Homewood, but it's probably going on anyway.
Again, it's more of a private rental situation, which we don't get it. How you let, you let off part of your.
That was just, you know, a bedroom and use of the bathroom, that was all that was.
When, when this section gets modified, if you mind going back, um, do the time restrictions still apply?
Time restrictions for?
Uh, if, if, uh, you go back, it was something like, if it, if, uh, if it's rented for less than thirty days, you need a business license and, uh.
Yeah, no, we would still have that, because we have, we've had some issues with, uh, rental properties that are used for.
Traffic or turnover of people, yeah, in, in that area.
Not been so much the issue in some jurisdictions where it's taking away from the actual housing stock.
Uh-huh.
Uh, that others, if you're need to use, it's more a matter of how it interacts with the neighbors in terms of noise.
How many.
Parking and a whole bunch of things.
Right, right, so those, that kind of component would stay somewhere, okay, or peel out on its own about, yeah, okay.
I like the idea of having both.
Do you? Yeah, I kind of misspoke earlier, I did look up where we actually currently permit co-living and it is accessory uses in the town center zone, multifamily high and the multifamily medium densities right now. So it is a multifamily zoning, but this is something we could look at and consider.
Commissioner Steph?
And I agree with the both, um, I was actually talking with somebody from Lacy's planning commission and they, this was literally a topic that they were talking about, is the term community versus co-living, all of this. So it's like our peers in counties around us are doing the same thing. Um, it'd be great to kind of work with them on this as well.
Yeah.
And say, what are you doing, what should we be doing and try and negate some of the double work or triple work that's happening in our tri-cities.
So for example, Olympia is pretty far along in our code development, they're probably almost close to adoption, at least is where we are.
Yep, they are.
County is in kind of a different spot, I've heard, it's likely, cross your fingers, that the county will adopt our zoning code or BUGA. Uh, there's, there's been some initial discussions that it makes much more sense to have, use our code rather than take their code and keep updating it to match ours, so, but that only applies within the urban areas. You've got a different in rural areas, so a lot of this thing, like co-housing and all that, commerce has basically said, don't even think about it. We had actually gone down that road when we were doing the housing allocation process, how do we deal with it? Kinda says, well, yeah, we do have people who are in under.
Great, alright.
Thank you.
You wanna go ahead?
Yeah, for, for time, I, I suggest we continue on with the other items.
So, are you wrapping up then, or do you mean?
Items in your presentation? Yeah, items in, in this presentation, yeah. So these are kind of our other housing items, not related to middle housing or ADUs. Um, there are two parking requirements, so we need to update our requirements for parking near transit. Um, uh, limit the amount of parking required near transit. Um, yeah, so basically, we can't really regulate the size to be bigger than the minimum or required for ADA. Um, and, uh, garages and carports may not be required. Um, and then development regulations regarding to surfacing, design type and size. Um, we need to, uh, be less restrictive when it comes to those requirements. Um, and then also, we had parking near transit, sorry, I'm, I think I skipped one, sorry about that. But yes, parking, we're updating our parking requirements in Title eighteen, um, for residential development and for, um, development near transit. And then we, we had questions earlier about the religious-sponsored housing. Um, we had really good discussions about, um, why specific to religious organizations for the exemption. Um, but when we were talking about it, it's providing, providing them an increased density bonus for affordable housing. Um, and then we talked about the, the requirements for that, it must be, um, for households earning less than eighty percent of the area median income and must remain affordable for fifty years. Uh, and then the other one, uh, was related to, um, homeless encampments. So reviewing our existing regulations on outdoor encampments, safe parking efforts, indoor overnight shelters, temporary small houses, um, emergency shelter beds, I do know a lot of religious organizations do provide night shelters, um, for the homeless, so that, um, a good point there, the legislation limits the city requirements on outdoor encampments, safe parking efforts. Okay, so basically what I just said, I don't know, Brad, if you know the answer to this, but, um, Commissioner Robbins brought up, why just religious organizations?
Uh, well, this is, it's, this is the state saying that we have to open up our current regulations to, at least to allow for religious organizations to have this. It could be a potential thing that we look at to expand beyond that. Uh, so it could be a nonprofit or whatever, but that's probably another conversation.
Yeah.
Something that the commission could certainly discuss and have a recommendation about. Um, one of the things that, um, we, our existing code dealing with temporary encampments is probably ten-plus years old and was reacting to a very specific issue at the time. That basically opened up the possibility of doing this in the first place, so it, it's ten years, maybe out of, maybe not. Uh, but it's probably, it's something that we have sort of put on the back burner for further conversation, because it gets to be a very complex issue.
Right, we, our, our decision is underdone, um, uh, the law seems to say that if a religious organization has, um, got a, um, uh, affordable, uh, low-income housing available, um, that somehow there has to be a provision in, attached to that property that even if the religious organization sells it or, you know, changes or whatever, that the property itself still stays in that affordable situation. And then, um, um, I'm hoping that the, the wording of the law doesn't limit, um, other entities, non-religious entities from, if they have an inclination or what have you, to, to, uh, to provide this kind of housing too. So I'm, uh, so two things, we recognize that we need to have this long-term stability in those, those things with the, which the state law seems to get at, for at least religious organizations, okay? Um, but then there's this whole other area, if somebody else, some other entity does it, you know, how to, how, you know, would, are they limited? Are they prohibited, you know, whatever, I don't, you know, so.
There's, 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 the current rules, which are in eighteen sixty, I think, um, it sets timelines for how long an encampment could.
Uh-huh.
And at, there's a, where it can be cited and everything else. Um, from my conversations, uh, on the housing issue, I do know there are a number of congregations that have expressed some interest in the community about doing that kind of thing. In Olympia, obviously, the Presbyterian Church and there's, there's others that do this currently. One thing I have not heard is from the nonprofits or another group, it's not a religious organization, expressing an interest in this. Um, it has been primarily the churches that I've been hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, because this is on existing typically properties that the church owns.
Right, yes.
And so this is allowing an increased density bonus for if they wanted to develop that land. And then if they had the land where they would allow temporary overnight shelters and stuff like that, then it would be to allow that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all terrific, I'm looking forward then also to, um, other entities that may want to help us with the housing situation.
Yeah, and if we only limit it to this, if we open it up to any, any religious.
It's likely that each of them are the religious institutions that have the, the land, the wherewithal, all that kind of stuff to do this. And the impetus, right, so, but there might be some other.
We do have affordable housing incentives currently in the code that aren't restricted specific to religious properties or.
Right.
Organizations, there are the, the density bonuses and, uh, development standards and some waivers, especially with impact fees and stuff, that would apply.
Yeah.
Um, with the stipulation too, I would like to say that I do believe, I recall saying that impact fees must be paid. So, if the organization wanted to propose, um, affordable housing, they would still have to pay for the impact fees.
Yeah.
So.
The, the issue of, uh, temporary encampments, religious or run by some organization is, is kind of a, it, we're, we're facing some big issues right now, because our funding from the state for the Right Away program was halved this year and a, a good portion of that funding was going towards Quinns Village and Olympia and some of the other, you know, temporary encampments that they had set up there. Unless it has a very specific tie back to Right Away, meaning that people were within the Wa, uh, Watchdaw, High Five, one-on-one area. Um, there was no funding if, for people outside of that.
Yeah.
And one of the concerns I have, and we're, we're now dealing with this very good issue, is how the hell are we gonna keep those places open? Don't get a million dollars here right now for Quinns Village. And I don't think any nonprofit in this area has independent sources outside of public funding.
Yeah.
Well, we start to get into another whole issue, on a smaller scale on the religious side, I think it's doable. I think Presbyterian Church is maybe ten or fifteen units total. That's still a big commitment.
Yeah.
And so, there's, there's some other things there that I, I just wanna call out.
Yeah, great. Um, not to belabor this, but, um, if we wanna leave adequate time for our food, um, security, uh, discussion, food system plan, uh, we should maybe wrap up this one.
Yep. Oh, you wanna wrap up the presentation as a whole?
Uh, yeah, unless there's a, uh, unless the group wants to just focus on this and not do food system.
No, it's, it's, we're good to wrap up, again, this is just a general, these are the specific topics. We don't have actual amendment language at this time, staff have created an internal work group. We're gonna work with the current development staff and then hopefully we'll come back with some language to review and, um, you know, at a later. They, I will say, I wanted to show you guys, this is our proposed schedule. So, um, after, oops, tomorrow, I'm presenting to our general government committee. Um, and then from July to August, this is when we're gonna be doing the internal work group. And then we will, um, be, you, I'll brief you all, um, September ninth on the ordinance. Um, yeah, we're getting close to the adoption phase, so it's getting exciting, we're.
Gonna be.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Woo, time flies, okay. So with that, thank you all for your comments and discussions, really appreciate that. I'm gonna turn it over to our next item, as soon as I stop sharing.
Thanks, everybody, I hope, yes, Commissioner.
I just wanted to say thank you, Erica, for all of this work and showing us a heads up for the newbies, I don't know how many newbies they are, but I'm a newbie, um, in figuring out what the process is, so, appreciate it.
Um, Erica, just one thing to, when we take this up next time, if you, if you happen to run across, if there are other places, other states that have maybe, uh, introduced or opposed or, um, caused there to be similar requirements on their local jurisdictions, it'd be good, interesting to know, how's it working out?
Connecticut is going in the direction that Washington went and the governor vetoed it.
We want other states or, like, can we do other, other counties?
We'll have to take it up now, just as part of the discussion, it'd be good to see, you know, how, how, how things are working out.
These ideas are not limited to Washington.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Texas just, uh, adopted something similar. Oh, cool, alright, um, let's move on to item number eight, our food system plan, we have a status update.
Good evening, thank you so much for having, making space and time, I know we're in the middle of a really, um, important discussion, so I appreciate that you put that aside for a minute so we could come and present the next step of the food system plan. So you have seen the community food assessment and reviewed that, and the next step is the goals and policies. Without further ado, because, um, this is about getting your feedback, I'll pass it over to Rebecca and we have a small presentation for you as well to help guide the conversation.
Yeah, so tonight was really looking at the, um, so the draft, the goals were actually given to me. Um, and they've been fleshed out a little bit, what I really like your feedback on tonight is the draft policies. So I just have a few slides and the slides are really just bringing those, um, policies up, so that we can look at them together. Um, the work to date, and I feel like, uh, that's the last time I spoke with you, I went over the, did a literature review, the fifty-some subject matter experts, um, created this food, uh, the community food assessment. And then this is taking, looking at what the existing environment is and making suggestions on how to move forward, given what exists. And so, the first goal, uh, I changed a little bit from what was originally given to me. What was originally given to me was how to provide healthy food for all members of the community. Some more words in there to get a little more specific, um, but that's goal one, and then there's five policies supporting that goal.
I love the culinary appropriate food.
Culturally?
Or culturally, and, um, sorry.
Were you reading culinary?
Yes.
Because it, it really, it fits in better with our community than just any food.
Yeah.
So I, I think that the wording that you put in there is very streamlined to our community, which is helpful, thank you.
Yes, good. Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Not, not just these, uh, policies, but all of them. Uh, what we've been doing in other chapters, uh, is, uh, designating, you know, which parts of the city, uh, staff are gonna be the lead in participating in it. I think it would be very helpful if you could, uh, stand on what's here and, and do that. Because I think one of our concerns is gonna be where the staff, uh, is gonna come up with the FTE to do these policies. We don't wanna put a policy in there we can't do.
Who defer to Dana and Matt?
I'll just talk about the process, um, because I think that'll.
I'll just talk about the process, um, because I think that'll answer and, and, um, help provide with how this is gonna move forward. So, after goals and policies, just like comp plan, we're gonna have implementation actions that get a little bit more specific and do directly tie to funding, uh, requests. So, those are gonna be draft in nature because as, um, as the council decides what funding we have for, and they, and they make priorities on what activities we're gonna be doing, some of those will, some of those will prioritize out in, as they budget and as they work on that. So, that is exactly part of it, and is coming at the next. You're reading our minds.
Would you like to look at goal two? So, goal two, I did not change the, um, original wording, which was reduced food waste. So, kept it at reduced food waste, um, and then dive in, in those other three proposed policies. And then the last goal, um, again, I did not change that one, the wording either, support local food processing and production. And five policies to support that.
A quick question. I remember from last time in our discussion, we talked a little bit about, kind of in this area, food processing. Uh, we talked, I don't remember what we called it, distribution or even export out of our area or, you know, fit, selling, uh, the food out of our area. Maybe distribution is a better word. Does that kind of in, get encompassed in, in this too?
It, it would. I guess it, it was interesting, so we just came from the city council meeting and a question came up, and I just wanna tease this out for you a little more. Um, someone there brought up something in goal three, and I basically redirected them. They were really, what they were talking about was more about food security issues and making sure that people had access to food.
Yes.
And so, that is, I'm, I'm putting those things more in that first goal about access.
Okay, okay.
And this really focusing more on the folks that are here in Tumwater that are, um, or food, you know, it, again, our food system is, uh, is very entangled.
Mm-hmm.
Processors and producers, so people that are growing the food or turning that, that food into, um, higher value food items. But in terms of access to food, especially for people who need emergency food assistance or ongoing assistance because of shortfalls with money to buy their own food, that's falling under that first goal of providing access to food.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah.
I remember your question from before, and I'm trying to think if I can rephrase it because I feel like we're not quite getting at your question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just kind of, um, I think the access part is, is very important, but I'm wondering if there's some, if there's some disconnect between the growers, the producers, the value adders, and the get it out there.
You're talking, expanding that to increase opportunity that look past our region.
Distribution. You're talking specifically about getting food-
Yeah, distribution, whether it's within our si- system, it's easier, distribution and, and getting the, getting the food to the people who need it is easier within 'cause we're small, right? But, um, but what is, are there any, maybe there's no trouble, maybe there's no problem with distribution, whether locally or farther afield?
And it, maybe it's, you know, also who I spoke with. Um, I didn't hear things like that coming up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and again, you know, I had limitations on the scope of the number of people that I engaged with.
Sure, sure.
And so, that was not something. I heard more things about, say, um, local folks that raise, um, animals, that have to ship those animals over to Moses Lake to be slaughtered and then brought back here. Um, but not, say, that person then that wants to, well, that's not true. I did hear someone talk about, um, certain, um, inter-beef sales and there's restrictions on how food gets distributed. And actually, I left that out of the assessment because that was beyond the scope of what the city of Tumwater. That has to do with something that's more, um, would be done at the state or federal level. Um, but I wasn't hearing from people about, like, access to markets outside of this area, if that's what you're talking about, like-
Um, somewhat, or just, or just do we, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's an infrastructure issue or if it's, um, we're producing things that don't yet have a market, um, that we need to help find that market? Um, you know, so that, that's a, that's a viable means of, um, of livelihood for people?
Yeah.
You know, also having the added benefit of, you know, food for people?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, so kind of, it, it is complex, it is all intertwined. But, um, you know, those kinds of questions about, uh, we can grow a ton of food here and make a ton of food, but if it doesn't get where it needs to go and do whatever, then...
I haven't, that had, that had not come-
Maybe it's not a problem.
Outside of access to markets.
Okay.
Um, looking inward, so, like, um, say that a farmer being able to accept, um, SNAP benefits, like, that kind of market. But I didn't look at-
Okay.
-access to broader markets.
Right, getting it into, you know, somebody who's, you know, a production facility, and then that production facility shipping out their goods. I'm kind of curious about that infrastructure of supplies in, goods out, kind of thing, and how that works.
And some of it, I feel like, um, is being met by our food hubs.
Mm-hmm.
But not, but even still, the food hubs are still looking pretty locally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there not enough food currently that's being produced to warrant this? Where we need to-
Maybe we don't have that much.
-shift our mindset to get it out there so much? Are we consuming it in our, in our region? So, like, if we're growing things in Tumwater, are we not growing so much that we're actually able to consume it all?
Or maybe-
In our direct region?
Yeah, maybe it's-
Is that happening?
Not even much value added, like, I think about the berry growers and things. You don't do anything to put them in a box and ship them wherever.
They're great questions, and I'd really say it would be beyond the scope of what I did.
Okay.
And so, definitely that could be something that could get looked at, but-
Yeah.
To be honest, it would be beyond the scope of what I did.
'Cause if we're talking Tumwater, I'm thinking, okay, what, what are we producing here in this region? Yeah, you have berry farmers, you have-
Right.
Um, Rutledge Farms, and they don't produce a ton because not the, uh, I mean, there's not the benefit, and they can't make their money backward to or some instead. Um, that's the way I view a lot of, um, rowing farmers, uh, slaughter hu- or cows, pigs, stuff like that. I don't really know too much. I know there's some cattle ranchers out going towards the Elm area, but it's like, I don't think we have so many here necessarily that we used to.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause like, going back to Bushberry Farms, I mean, it used to be six hundred acres, now it's five acres, and there's not enough, I mean, they, they can produce all they want there, and it's easily distributed amongst, um, a CSA or it's immediately consumed. There's not leftovers. That's the way I, I kind of think about it. And I don't know if that is sort of what's-
Yeah, that's some of it, for sure. I mean, I guess I'm thinking of the, the food system as, as more than, as, as the entire food system. You know, and so, whether it's to feed people who, uh, don't have, uh, the means themselves is certainly one, one angle. But then there's, you know, on a grocery store is how food's getting in and out. Some of it's local, some of it's not, you know? Well, all that, all of that whole big ecosystem of food is, is pretty large, even though, you know, Tumwater itself is pretty small, and there's not specifically a lot of, maybe a lot of growers, but there may be producers here. You know, I'm kind of thinking of, you know, kind of the model of like microbrewing and, you know, and kind of building on some of that kind of stuff. But, you know, the, the rental kitchens for somebody who's making whatever, bread.
Yeah, absolutely, it's great, again, it's just beyond the scope of what I did.
Yeah.
And we have Harbor Wholesale, that's a local-ish company, that's a wholesale company that does do a lot of that.
Mm-hmm, right.
And there are vendors that I use at work. We just switched to a, a local vendor, the, from a vendor that's not so local because we want to foster that relationship and provide an outlet for their local bread.
Yeah.
Um, and, and grains coming in, it's not coming from our region.
Right.
Uh, but it's coming in from the outside, being processed into bread, and then we are purchasing that bread from them.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I thi- I think there is a lot to it, and I agree with you, it's, it's a very large component, um, to all of this. Um, I mean, and then I, I think this is Left Bank, if I have not seen mistaken.
Yeah, this is Left Bank.
Absolutely delicious, so, uh, French pastries, uh, being produced over there in Olympia, um, absolutely delicious, very unique product, um, not using probably anything really local, so necessarily.
Not necessarily, but it, but they're still-
They're still locally-
Taking their supplies in from wherever they come-
Yep, from wherever they come.
And making them into something that is part of the food system here.
And their goal is to keep it here and not be a distributor outside.
Yeah.
So, literally, that's the decision they made ten years ago, is they want to only provide-
Yeah.
-local French pastries to our community-
Yeah.
-which is Olympia, Tumwater, Lacey, our local region, not be a distributor.
Right.
Because they can keep it as the best product possible, and, um, we will benefit from it. People in Seattle, Seattle have enough.
Have their, have their own. Uh, but other, other types of, um, uh, businesses may make a slightly different calculation.
Yeah.
And might-
It's a great question, you know, and I feel like, um, like-
It's just beyond-
Surveying out to the different, um, it was interesting, I'd actually at one point had reached out to the Thurston Economic Development Council to see if they could produce for me with their data folks, um, a list of all the different, um, businesses within the city that are grocery stores, food processors and producers. And we realized the, the way the data was, because they gave me a dataset, and then I, like, I quickly skimmed, and I was like, well, Spuds isn't in here.
Yeah.
So, I was like, well, Spuds isn't in here, what else is in there?
What else is in there?
You know?
Yeah.
Um, but there was a point in time where I was kind of, and then I realized I had to kind of, uh, scale things down for myself, but I mean, there's nothing stopping y'all from, from, uh, studies on it.
Right. Commissioner Kurt Patrick?
Does Briny Sees fit into your, uh-
I don't know them, but-
Briny Sees is, is in, in a warehouse on the other side of the airport from here. And once, one day a week, they go up to Seattle, they buy salmon, they bring it back here, and they smoke it and they sell it, both out of, uh, the warehouse where they are and also out of Thurgill.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh-
Right, they're a producer, yeah.
So, that's our producer, and, and it all, it all goes local. In fact, they had a family emergency and they moved back to, um, Minnesota for a year. And they operated out of Minnesota and kept the business going.
Wow.
I think they would fit into the category of a processor.
Yeah, there would be a processor-producer rather than a, um, grower.
Well, you have the seafood place in the brewery district-
Yeah.
-that is actually down on the Olympia waterfront, but I think is getting most of their seafood from the, uh, from the area. The oysters, for example.
Yeah, just, yeah, the farm.
What's the name of them? All of a sudden, I-
Olympia Seafood?
Yeah, Olympia Seafood.
They have their own, they do some of their own fishing, I think, out of Westport.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but they may get other things.
Self-fish?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the Tumwater Bill. And the other one I, uh, think about is the meat market right up here on Capitol Boulevard.
Western.
Western meats. I don't know where they get all their meats in from, but, and if there are some of the local folks, um, who have cattle, for example, or goats, if, if they're using them as a distribution center or not. But it sounds like it just didn't, it didn't come up in a concern from the folks that you talked to, but-
And, I mean, if we looked at, you know, who I spoke with, it's not like I spoke with fifty-
Right.
-grilled processors and-
And it would've been nice if, if you could've got a list of those kinds of, of, uh, businesses.
I'm almost wondering, it sounds like, do we wanna, like, oh, hey, come and here's, here's ways we can help facilitate you getting the access you need, or you getting the distribution you need, you getting, um, partnered and paired up with the right people? Is that something that we would look at? Because, I mean, coming from industry of distilling, it, like, the grain, all that, I tried to get local producers of grain, um, we would get, uh, things from Skagit Valley, so we would do that. And I know that our local breweries do a lot of that as well, they use Skagit Valley and specialty malts and specialty, um, products from as regionalized and as localized as possible. Um, but if you're a small enough business, you might not have access to the right networks to know who to go to, to go and get into Western meats. And you'd have to start door knocking, basically, and going down, be like, hey, I got a cow for sale, like, what, how do I sell to you?
So, I do it, yeah.
And that takes a lot for somebody that's a startup business, um, somebody that, uh, produces milk from goats turned to cheese, like, um, must be gone pre- primarily.
Right.
Like, how, all, they're big enough now, but now they produce to di- multiple different, um, facilities. Is, is that kind of something, like, how can we help guide people?
Yes.
Is there a way that there could be, I mean, I always go to a portal where somebody that's, I'm a food processor, I'm gonna go and look in the city of Tumwater, I'm gonna go to the website, and it's gonna tell me a few different things that I can do to try and get there? Is that what, kind of, some of it?
That's part, that could be one aspect of the, what is the, what is the city's, um, I'll call it, infrastructure, um, that helps people do their thing?
And that might be part of the strength in-
Right?
So, that might be part of this, where it's like, hey, city has a portal on the website where somebody can go and-
Something like that, or is there-
So, I feel, I feel like what you all are saying-
Yep.
-fits with the these-
Yep.
It does, it fits in there, but it's-
It's a di- it's getting in a little bit, diving in-
Maybe it's a little, yeah.
Into the implementation action.
Yep.
Because I feel like what you're saying is, let's reduce the barriers.
Yeah.
Let's provide incentives.
Right, right. You know, from, we wanna kind of create the conditions where these things can really thrive.
Yeah.
Right? And it's linked with our economic development, it's linked to all the other kinds of things, but, you know, I think that's a really, um, a, a kind of a key component to, you know, how, how are, how are these pieces kind of physically moving around?
And I think that's what we'll get going through this whole thing, is this is what the city's now gonna do to do all these different-
Right, right.
And that, and I, you forgive me if you're not, if you're not ready, but, um, then that brings me to our timeline.
Yes.
And how we move forward with the project.
Yes.
So, I do wanna also call attention to Rebecca's contact information here, so if you have further questions for her, just, um, you know, feel free to reach out. Uh, we'll send this, uh, PowerPoint around so that you have the PowerPoint and can look through it. But then also, um, next step is that those implementation actions, and it just really sounds like you're there, and you really wanna-
I'm ready to go.
Like, let's move on already. So, um, moving on, looks like, uh, we'll be creating the implementation actions and then letting those go through legal review because they do represent, um, that next step of this is going to cost the city money, this is going to incur potentially liability or risk. So, just making sure that those are, um, things that we can do. And, and like we discussed before, you know, just brainstorm to us, we'll do the, we'll do the dirty work, we'll pick out the things that we can't do. So, we gotta go through that process. Um, and then once that is, uh, cleanered, then we're coming back in August, I believe, uh, to give you those.
That's okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's August for the legal review. I have it written down here. August for legal review, and then super review, and then, um, yeah, we're back in September on the nineteenth night, sorry.
So, our, our intent is, we've got an internal process, obviously, legal review's important because the way this is written, it's one thing to obligate, current council may be completely subversive, what we're doing, you know, in a different direction they wanna go in. So, this plan really is sort of a tie. It also requires a little bit of internal review on our behalf to make sure that we have the capacity to say if we're gonna do something. If we have it now, or if we don't, what do we need to do? So, that's, that's gonna be part of that process. So, the intent really is, in September, to come back with a brief, a robust plan, essentially with the implementation actions spelled out, as well as a resolution that will allow you to, um, move forward with a recommendation of the council and the Republican looking, you know, it officially, uh, part of, you know, what the city will be doing.
So, scratch that last little chart because we wanna make sure that we're running this through, um, proper processes and giving you a list that's, that's very actionable.
Oh, I think you've done a great job, this is very-
Yeah, yeah, I like it.
Yeah. Great. Commissioner Kurt Patrick?
Yeah. Um, I noticed under the list of subject matter, uh, capital community services, capital community services, but they aren't mentioned anywhere in here. And they, they food, they feed several hundred people. anywhere in here. They feed, they feed several hundred people a day.
Well, I didn't necessarily, you're not going to necessarily, are you saying Catholic?
You had a person, Jasper Quentin, that you spoke to on the subject matter exports and considering the importance of Catholic Community Services to emergency feeding of, of our homeless population. They're, they're, they are the biggest ones on campus. They feed more people than anybody else. But they're, yet they're, they're not even mentioned. You mentioned the CLO, which feeds far fewer people.
So the folks that are listed as subject matter, they're all consulted and their input is in here. You will not necessarily see, if you flip through here, you won't necessarily see everyone called out. But that doesn't, I mean, their input is infused in the, in the document.
I just, you know, I saw the, I don't know how you pronounce it, but the CLO group, which is an Olympia organization, which provides food for homeless.
Because they were also participated as one of the folks that I reached out to. But again, CLO is not called out here other than on that, on that page.
They are called.
Well, I guess all I mean to say is I did not call out every single, every single one of these is not necessarily called out in there. And part of that was I was trying to be, there was brevity. I was trying to make a document that was.
Is there, Commissioner Kirkpatrick, is there something that you feel should be better represented? Not necessarily just an attribution, but is there something that you think is not captured, is missing?
Well, I'm trying to think of any other organization that provides meals to the homeless more than they do or even approaching what, what these.
Specifically here in Tumwater, specifically in Tumwater.
Tumwater people. CLO was also an Olympia organization. That's what made me think of it. That's, that's mentioned in there. And they don't do it the same way that the partnership between Salvation Army and Catholic Community Services. They put these breakfast, lunch and dinner to a huge population of people. And they're on, they're on the bus line, so. Here are a number of them from Tumwater.
They did not provide a complete inventory. This document does not provide a complete inventory of every entity that's providing.
But that we do have emergency food assistance provided by whoever.
Right, and I think the level of data to get that from each of the organizations, unless it's requested.
So, do you feel something, do you feel like it's, even notwithstanding, we're not calling out which entities in the inventory?
In this current collaborations and resources. I'm looking at page 39, current collaborations and resources. And it lists several entities. Oh, I'm sorry. Current collaboration and resources.
Under access and security.
Oh, okay. And, you know, I don't have an opinion about all of this, but I'm just wondering if that's what, an area that Catholic Family Services and working with Salvation Army, that partnership should be included there. It sounds like what Commissioner Kirkpatrick is saying, as they do quite a bit.
I mean, is that the, is that the kind of thing that you're looking for?
I'll have to do a little research to, I can under, add that to the access and.
Salvation Army provides the facilities. Catholic Community Services provides all the money and all the food.
Because they have seven different collaborators listed here. And you're talking about that they, they should have something in here because they provide a substantial amount.
Right, yeah, that's what I hear. And particularly if this is a public document, if that's the hard part of listing some people and not knowing who you may have missed, you know, how that goes. It's, it's hard.
And it could be even, I mean, it can go either way where we choose not to list anyone specifically.
Well, I think you, I mean, if the goal here is, I'm reading the intent of the plan, is to review the, the current food landscape in Tumwater and create a strategy, blah, blah, blah. But if we're just painting the picture of what is, and then kind of next step, what, what do we want? How do we get there? And maybe a little disclaimer, this as we may, I mean, if that's our, if that's the intent of our food system plan, you know, we should, we should probably describe that. We maybe don't have to be exhaustive about every single entity, but to paint the picture of the landscape of what's out, what kinds of services are in that system.
Saying some, some are listed here.
Yeah, something like that.
On exhaustive list.
And plus it can change in the future.
Yeah, because it does say current, but I, I agree that it's a exhaustive.
Looking at the time again, how are you doing?
Ready for you.
But you've got what you need for the moment?
Yeah, unless you have any other.
Okay.
Sorry, I do have, I do have one more. And your key developments in the same section? For any of us working with low income families, de reduction in funding for SNAP. And the new requirements for that are going to be a key development in more people needing to access food banks.
So there is a point that says shifting federal policy priorities have introduced uncertainty around future food security funding. And I just, I feel like especially this and with what's happening, things are changing so often that I can't keep up with it. It's beyond my expertise to be tracking on all that. So that was in a way what I was trying to make sure that we're keeping that in mind that there's so much uncertainty.
And tracking the fact that that was written at least two months ago.
Yeah, I know.
For the, for a lot of things, very forward looking.
Yeah, and I mean, this is a done deal. It's already being implemented with clients who receive SNAP. I have a grandchild in Wisconsin who woke up in a public meeting and then was invited to go to another P and be the speaker, which is like, whoa. And because they knew other young people who were being booted off SNAP, but because of disabilities were not being able to meet all the work requirements. So it's a done deal. And I think, very carefully, because this is a political item, but noticing it isn't just the, the ratio of food, cost of food to cost of housing, it's a change in funding available to support people who would qualify for SNAP. It's a reduction in funding. And that's just a fact. I don't think.
And the additional requirements.
Yeah, and so just, just a little wordsmithing in that area.
Program is not secure.
Yes, yes. It's, it's predicted to have quite an impact and I think the food banks are going to feel that pretty quickly.
I mean, I think maybe that's one of the key things that the landscape ought to describe is that we have an uncertain food system for many people in our community because of that, that's one example.
Well, and then you have Fresh that, did they actually close Fresh? It was July.
I get in track on the final school budget. What I had heard is it was getting caught.
I understand that, yes.
Yeah, there's so many things that are being caught.
It's, it's going to really change our landscape. And again, I really appreciate everything you did and I hope you don't take this as a negative.
Oh, absolutely not.
I just feel a little passionate about, about Maslow's hierarchy. It's food, it's shelter, you know, and it's clothing. And there are people struggling to meet those basic.
Fellow commissioners, we're at nine o'clock. Do you want to continue this conversation? We did not get to the director's report, but we don't necessarily.
Very quickly, our deputy director physician interviews are scheduled for Monday, the 29th. We have five people confirmed.
Yay, great. Excellent, right. Do you all want to continue on with any more discussion?
Motion to adjourn for the evening.
Been moved to adjourn. There's second, a second, Mr. Nelson, seconding. All in favor of adjourning tonight, please say aye.
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 Thank you. None opposed, since that was everybody. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you Brad for the, the treat.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night, Tina.
Have more.
Yeah.
Those were hard.
That was a lot.